The following is a local resident producer's program. The program content is the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Media Services, the City of Oshkosh, or Time Warner Cable.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to ION Oshkosh. Cheryl Hens here. And Dan Ryland, you'll notice, is not here this evening by virtue of the empty seat next to me. But he did want to participate in candidate interviews. He's recovering at home from surgery, as I was a few weeks back. But he's joining us telephonically. And we're going to be talking to two council candidates tonight for the Oshkosh Common Council. So, Dan, are you on the phone?
I'm present.
All right. Very good. So, thanks for being there. Hope you're feeling well enough to do this. And joining us this evening is Tom Peck Jr. He is one of five candidates running for the Oshkosh Common Council. There are three at-large seats that are available for grabs this April. Jessica King is not seeking reelection. Tony Palmieri is running for mayor. So if he does not get elected mayor, he will be off the council altogether. And the other seat that's up for grabs is Bob Peschels. And he is seeking reelection, and he will be on in a future show. So in this particular hour, we're going to be talking with Tom, as well as Deb Allison Asby. I think that's how she pronounces her last name. We'll find out for sure when she gets here in about a half an hour. But anyway, thanks for being here, Tom. We appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Cheryl. Hi, Dan.
Hi, Tom.
I think, you know, people who've been around here for a while probably remember you as having been on the Winnebago County Board. It's been, I don't know how many years it's been since you've been there.
I think it's about, I think it's about four years now that I've been off the Board. I was on the Board for just about 12 years.
Okay. Yeah, it was a long time. That much I remember. So maybe you can just, you know, for someone who doesn't remember, or maybe is new to the area, as I'm sure we've got a lot of new folks in Oshkosh, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for common council.
All right. Well, I'm a lifelong resident of Oshkosh, except for about a year after I got out of college. Work for Bemis in town, in sales. We have a family-owned business in the community as well. And so, like I say, with being a lifelong resident of Oshkosh, I've seen Oshkosh grow in fits and starts, and have its ups and downs, and everything else like that. And, you know, I could've gone other places, but I chose to come back here. I think it's a great place to raise a family. I think there's some very, very good, interesting things going on in Oshkosh right now. And, you know, I kind of joke that the lump is finally off my forehead from 12 years on the county board, so now it might be time to put the lump back on. But, you know, and so, part of it being that there's many good things going on in Oshkosh, but my parents always taught us as kids that if you want something changed, if you want to make things better, don't just sit on the sidelines. Get involved and try and make the change happen. You may not succeed every time, but at least you throw your hat in the ring, and you participate, and go and try and make your best effort. So that's the whole thing right there.
Okay. All right. Well, and I will say this, you know, I mean, when you were on the county board, I certainly, as I don't, with every local politician, I don't agree with every single vote. But I always admired you because, A, you had the courage of your convictions, and you really didn't back down. If you strongly believed in something, you didn't back down. And I thought that you were a voice of reason, usually. You were a voice of common sense. And I respected that, you know. So I'm glad you're throwing your hat in the ring. You know, you're our first candidate that we've interviewed for the council. So I don't know what the other, you know, candidates are like necessarily, but, you know, I just wanted to tell you that from that standpoint.
I greatly appreciate that. One of the things that I prided myself on when I was on the Board was, is that, yeah, you were right, that I would, if I would stand for my convictions, I wouldn't back down. But the reason was, is I had done my homework. And I had looked at both sides of the issue. And in anything, you can't, you know, we all bring a preconceived notion, or our own set of facts, to the table, no matter what happens. But the thing is, is you can't just have that set of facts there. You know, it's like Senator Patrick Moynihan said, "Everyone's entitled to their own opinion, but not their own set of facts." You know, and so, is if you come and say, "This is all I'm going to do," that's not the right way to legislate and be a representative of the community. Sometimes maybe something you have in your knowledge can be proved wrong. And so, it's kind of like, I told my children this, is that when they get involved in debates and things like that in school, and as a salesperson as well, you have to know more about, almost, you have to know more about the other side of the issue, or the other product than you do about yours. And when you go and you research this, you may find out that, you know what, there's some really good things here. And then you try and craft that and everything, as you said, a reason. And that's something I'm a strong believer in. Right now, in our political climate, especially at the national level, we're also seeing at the state level, it's one side or the other. You know, we hear about bipartisanship and everything else, and people say, "Well, you know, there's no compromise." And many people make fun of compromise, you know, that it's, you know, kind of warm leftovers. But the thing is, is that when you compromise, "I'm not getting everything I want, you're not getting everything you want." But you know what? Chances are, that's the best thing for us, because we've been able to come together and say, "This is what we need to move the city forward."
Sure, sure.
Or whatever we're doing.
And Dan, whenever you want to jump in, I can't see your hand motions or anything like normal, so anytime you want to jump in, just jump right in. But I wanted to ask Tom real quickly, you mentioned that you have a family business in town. Is it downtown? Is it somewhere else?
Yeah, it's downtown. It's Crosby Dance Studio. It's right down on Main Street. It's basically, you know, my wife is the owner, choreographer, and everything like that. But it is, it shows that we have a commitment to this community. I mean, when we were looking for a building, we thought, you know, the best place to do it was downtown Oshkosh. And so, you know, granted, it's not a huge business employing a lot of people, but we put our money into the community because we believe in it.
Sure. Dan, go ahead.
Okay. First of all, Tom, I'm glad you're running. I signed your nominating petition.
Yeah, thank you. I noticed that.
At Old Bill's several weeks ago. So I wish you the best.
Thank you.
What personal traits could you identify that would make you a good council member?
Thick head, thick skin. Again, but then, you know, I mean, kind of being facetious, but I mean, that is something that you have to have in the public realm. You have to understand that some of the decisions you make, people aren't going to like. And, you know, the thing is, is that you, as, but in, but as, along with those two things, I do my homework. I don't just look at things and say, "Okay, this is what I think." I dig down into the issues and to try and really get down to the bottom of it and see what is best for something. It's something that, I mean, that's just something that, it's part of my being, is when I do something, I do it all out. And the only way to do something is to fully immerse yourself in it. So I think that, you know, the fact that, you know, thick, you know, sometimes, like I said, a thick head, thick skin, I'll do the homework. I know it can be considered a cliche, but, you know, I want to understand what's going on, and I want to represent the City of Oshkosh the best I can. And that said, when I am on the council, I am not going to represent, I don't look at it as, you don't just represent those people that voted for you, okay? You have to represent the City of Oshkosh, because you are an Oshkosh City Councilor. And as with any government entity, if we begin to represent those that elected us, or those that may have supported us, or whatever, then we begin to factionalize things, we get into fiefdoms and things like that. That's not what's best for the city.
Another kind of follow-up from this, were there any organizations or groups that encouraged you to run?
No, not, I mean, no organized groups. It's just that, since I've been off the county board, it's almost been a weekly thing. People have, "You should run for school board, you should run for city council, you should run for this, you should do this." My response is oftentimes, "Well, why don't you do it?" And I says, "No, no, no, you do it," you know, because I take that as a great compliment, because people, they did that, they do that because of my past record of what I did, and what I had, and in that. So it's a great compliment, and that they say, "You did it then, and we know you can do it now." And that, you know, basically, the people that have come forward with this, and it is just people, there has been no one organization or whatever that has come and said, "We want to do this, we want you to do this." It's people, it's friends, it's associates, it's, you know, all types of things like that. So that's why I'm doing it.
Cheryl, I'm going to throw this back to you, and I have some specific issues, but why don't you start with some of them?
Okay. All right. Happy to. Because I wanted to follow up sort of on what you had talked about earlier, Tom, is, you know, factions, or camps, if you will. I think much of what we've seen, we've seen historically with the Oshkosh Common Council is a lot of 3-4 votes, a lot of 5-2 votes, depending on the makeup of the council. But what we've clearly seen, I think, over the years, is pretty much a division. You've got progressives, who a lot of times just are rubber stamping, and then, not always, and not everybody, but that has been the case in a lot of situations. And then you've got the others that I'll call naysayers. They kind of like things the way they are, and they ask a lot of questions, almost to the point of interrogating city staff and city administration. There doesn't seem to be, except in a few cases at times, kind of a moderate approach, a middle-of-the-road approach to things. Where does Tom Peck Jr. sort of fall? Or who do you most identify with on the current council?
Best way to describe it is the old Groucho Marx line, "I won't belong to any organization that will have me as a member." I, you know, you brought, you used the term progressive, and then you used the term naysayer. There's another, you know, we also throw out the conservative and the liberal terms. The problem with that is, is that that tends to pigeonhole you. And I could make the argument, "I'm a liberal-conservative, I'm a conservative-liberal." I'm a pragmatist. I, you know, I understand that I can't have everything that I want, and you can't have everything that you want. So it's, I think the best way to describe it is a pragmatist, reasonable, someone who is going to look at both sides of the, maybe not even both sides of the issue, but maybe there's a third or a fourth side to the issue. And to then make a decision based on that with the best information. The city council is basically the board of directors of the City of Oshkosh. We hire a CEO, which is the city manager. The city council sets the policy, and then says to the manager, "You execute the policy." And then he uses the departments to follow up and execute that policy. You know, recently, we had this whole kerfuffle with snow plowing.
Yes. And that's a good word to describe it, actually.
That is a good word.
I have my thesaurus right here.
I can't spell it, but it's a very good word.
K-E-R-F-U. But, but to, you know, the thing was, is that there were, you know, I received phone calls, you know, we hear that. I had constituents contact me. I'm sure that that did happen. I'm sure that there were some streets that didn't get plowed. But I think the city did, these road crews, I think they did a heck of a job based on what was going on, based on what type of storm and everything else it was. And to, you know, somehow try and micromanage it, and try and make political points out of it, and say, "Oh, my goodness," you know, and try, you know, "We heard, well, Fond du Lac did this, or Manasha did this," or whatever. Well, you know what? Depending on where the storm track was, it could've been different measurements of snow, it could've been drifting, could've been done in a different way. It's, you know, I think that we, they do the best job we can. I think if there is an issue, I think what we need to do is say, "Hey, look, there were these issues. Let's talk about it, let's review it." Not that I'm saying to not do it in the public eye, so to speak, but to do it in the way of, almost like you said, you know, an adversarial way of almost cross-examining what's going on. That's not the way to do it. You know, I think by and large, the city departments do things very well. Could things be done better? Yes. But talk to each other instead of talking at each other.
Let me just kind of follow up on that, because what one of the council members told me was that when we went to trash automation, you know, that made a shift in some of the employees, and what they were doing, and so forth. And that when we got inundated with all that snow very early in the season, and with that particular snowfall, I don't, in that storm, I don't think we had any situation different here than we did in Amro, Nina, Manasha, Appleton, Fond du Lac. I think we all, in this area, got hit with pretty much the same amount of stuff. I know, we've heard about ice and all that. I don't necessarily subscribe to that. I think more than likely what happened was, is exactly what this counselor said. There weren't enough people to go around because of this shift in employees. And that, there was a longer explanation than that, but for time constraints, let's just say that's the simple, you know, explanation of what it is. So how would you then explain if you were elected to constituents? You know, because people want service, they want things done, they don't always necessarily want to pay for it, you know, or they think what they're paying is too high.
Right.
You know, how would you balance that with constituents, Tom?
You have to be a diplomat, and you have to understand that, you know, like you said, some people think that they pay too much in taxes for what they do, and for what they're getting. What you do is, is you go, you take the concern, and you say, "This is, okay, I've heard what you've said. Let me go back and follow up on that." You don't immediately react, you don't want, you know, you don't, you know, just fly, you know, just off-the-cuff provide a response and say, you know, whatever. You go back, you find out what it is, you get the information, you follow up, and you say, "Here's what it is, here's what happened." Now, then you take the incident, or you take this, and you use it as a learning experience. And you say, "Okay, these were the issues, this is what happened. Now, how do we try and assure that this doesn't happen again? How do we have the correct number of employees available, or whatever the situation was?" And then you follow up with the constituent.
Okay.
I think, you know, you know, we've, people, you know, I don't like paying taxes any more than anybody else does. But I also understand that taxes are a part of living in a society like we have, and that they do provide services and everything else like that. You know, kind of what we're experiencing right now, I don't validate the perception that many people have of overpaid, underworked, lazy, public employees.
I don't either.
All right?
Can I jump in here?
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I've got a couple of short questions, and I hope I get short answers.
All right.
If elected, Tom, a proposed amendment to the PET ordinance to allow four hen chickens per household will be on the agenda soon. If you're on the council in April, on a scale of 1 to 10, with 10 being the highest, how high of a priority would that be for you?
It wouldn't be a very, I don't consider it a very high priority. I think that, you know, that, there's other issues that I think are a little more important than that. I mean, there, it is, it is something that's come up, but I would put it probably down around, you know, 3.
Okay.
You know, it's just, that's, you know, probably that's about where I'd put it.
Okay. Another short question with a short answer, hopefully. Would you support privatizing any city services in the future if we get huge budget cuts from shared revenue?
All right. I'll try and make it as short as possible. If it is in the best interest of the city that we can continue to provide the services at a lower cost and still maintain the quality of the service, then it is a smart decision to do. If it somehow minimizes the service, if it doesn't allow us to fulfill the functions that we as a city need to do, then I think we need to take a look at how we fund doing that.
Okay. If you had one thing that you would want to change, if elected, what would it be?
I think would be to, it would be to, for the entire City of Oshkosh to have a positive attitude about what we can do. I think what I, what I, one of the things I want to work to is to say, you know, and I know for some people, this is going to kind of raise the hair on the back of their neck, but yes, we can. I think that there's a lot of things in Oshkosh that we can take care of, that, and we can move this city forward and become what I think all of us truly want it to be. So it would be to work to try and change the, you know, try and make this a very positive community, and have people, and have everybody on board in understanding where we're going.
Okay. Cheryl, back to you.
All right. Thanks, Dan. One of the things that has been in the news more recently than not, and, but overall for the last couple of years, is the Park Plaza Hotel downtown, or whatever it's being called these days. You know, we hear them battling back and forth. The Gill Brothers, who are the Canadian owners, they're saying, "Well, the city hasn't done its part." The city is saying, "They haven't done their part, and they've, they've done some construction, they've started on some renovations and so forth, but haven't secured the necessary building permits." And to the best of my knowledge, as of this taping date, they still don't. But certainly, when the last article was in the paper, they still hadn't, and that was, you know, a few weeks back, or whatever. So there seems to be a disconnect there between what they should be doing and what they are doing, or not doing. But now they want the city to kick in, and I got to look at my numbers here, anywhere from $2 million to $8 million for financial assistance. Now, the city manager says, A, they've broken a trust, in essence, and B, their financial demands, or expectations, requests, whatever word you want to attach to it, are unrealistic. What does Tom Peck Jr. feel about this? I mean, here, we've got this building that's attached to a nicely renovated, beautifully renovated convention center, and we have no hotel that really is responsive, and that people necessarily want to go to, from a convention standpoint. So what do we do?
Well, okay. Gee, I think I'll leave. No, I don't think that the city should be funding this, is basically with a blank check. I think the city manager has come forward and said that there is, that the city is willing to provide whatever financial help the city is able to, but they're not going to foot the entire bill. I think that's the correct way to do it. That said, yeah, you are correct. We've got this beautiful convention facility, we've got a brand-new Main Street downtown, we've had significant improvements downtown, and we have this underused building that needs work on. We need to somehow get this off the dime and move it forward. But, you know, again, I don't know all of the ins and outs of it yet.
Sure.
I don't know exactly what's been there. But I would tend to focus on what the city manager has said, and that is, based on the information that I've got, that's where I think it is, is that certain things have not been done. I think the city has lived up to the commitment that they made originally. And so therefore, you know, we've got to, you know, we've got to work together with this. I think there's some, I think there's some other people out there that have talked about, you know, purchasing this hotel. And I think that possibly that, and this is pure, this is just my opinion, I think that when the purchase was made, I think that there were some high expectations. And I don't think that the city in any way set these, you know, basically set, you know, went and said, "Oh, yeah, you know, blank check, here you go." So I think there were some, and now, and so now we're seeing where we're at.
Sure. What do you see as the, some of the most pressing issues, you know, budgetary, of course, is right at the top, but what do you see as some of the other pressing issues that you would like to really focus on if you're elected, Tom?
Well, obviously, you know, one of the things is, we often hear is economic development. Okay? Obviously, anytime you can grow your economy and create jobs, that's good for your local, for your localities. Obviously, if we have more jobs here, people will tend to live here, they'll buy homes here, tax basis goes up, everything like that. So I think we need to, you know, work with our businesses in town to help them grow. Again, but with not, with not blank, not with blank checks. I think the work that was, the helping, you know, the TIF that was set up for Oshkosh Truck, I think that was a reasonable thing to do, based on what we're seeing now. I mean, we're talking, what was it, just last week? Truck is talking about hiring hundreds of people. So we need to do that. I think we need to look at neighborhood revitalization. One of the things is, is that I'd like to do is, when I, when I am elected, is Berlin, I found out, they, several years ago, they, five banks in Berlin put together $50,000 of money. And basically, what it is, is the city, it's the bank's money, but the city takes a look at it, and it's a part of a neighborhood revitalization for exterior renovations.
Okay.
And what the city does is, the bank loans the city the money at 4%. The city reviews the applications, and they're approved, you have to meet financial requirements. So it's not just like, "Hey, I want some money and everything else." It's like going to a bank, and then the loans are given out for 6%. And then they're paid back to the city, and the money goes back into the fund, and it just recycles and everything. And in my conversations with Berlin, they said they've had, they've had one entire block that is basically, people have, you know, done things to their exterior on their house. The thing with that is, is that by making improvements to the home stock, we are able to, you know, we hear about the East Side, and some of the blight on the East Side. You'll make these neighborhoods more friendly to people. When people are looking at homes, you know, they want to live in nice neighborhoods. And if you have a rundown housing stock, people are not going to look in that neighborhood, well, they're not going to buy homes in that neighborhood. So you begin this, you begin this downward spiral with that. I think there's some really creative things that can be done with minimal amounts of money.
Okay.
To do that, talk to our banks, and to get them involved in it. I think we need to work with the county on the airport. A lot of people look at the airport as, "Ah, it's just for EAA." Many people don't understand, there's about 600 jobs that are located on the airport.
Okay.
It's a great asset to build.
We're out of time.
Oh, okay.
So let me just do this.
No problem.
Take a look into camera 3, Tom, and in about 30 seconds or less, tell folks why they should vote for you.
My name is Tom Peck Jr. Like I said earlier, I'm a lifelong resident of the City of Oshkosh, and I believe in Oshkosh. I want to make Oshkosh a place that we can be proud of, that we can raise our families in, and hopefully, that our children that we raise here will want to come back. So please vote for me, and I appreciate your vote, on April 5th, Tom Peck Jr. And I look forward to serving you and working with you and for you.
All right. Excellent.
Thank you.
Just sit tight.
No problem.
And if you don't think you can get to the polls, or whatever, on April 5th, you can always vote by absentee ballot. If you have questions about either getting registered to vote, or voting by absentee, contact the city clerk, Pam Ubrich. So we're going to take a short break. When we come back, we'll be joined by another council candidate, Deb Allison Asby. We'll be right back.
Every year, the U.S. Department of the Treasury receives about 1.4 million reports of problems with paper checks. Checks can be lost, stolen, or delayed. If you still receive social security payments by paper check, Treasury wants you to know about a safer, more convenient way to get your money. The Direct Express Prepaid Debit Mastercard. The Direct Express card is new and is available to anyone receiving social security benefits, even if you don't have a bank account. Your monthly benefits will be automatically placed onto your card account each month on the day your money is due. While other debit cards cost money, it is possible to use the Direct Express card for free to make purchases, pay bills, and get cash at thousands of locations nationwide. There are no sign-up or monthly account fees, no more waiting for the mail, or worrying about lost or stolen checks. Call 1-877-212-9991, or visit www.usdirectexpress.com.
I have been mispronouncing her name the last couple of times I've said it, so joining me now here in the studio is another council candidate for the Oshkosh Common Council, Deb Allison Osby. So anyway, welcome, thank you very much. And Dan, do we still have you on the phone?
You still have Dan on the phone.
All right, excellent. I was explaining to Deb during the break why you're joining us by the phone this evening, and she understands completely, so anyway.
And welcome to the show, Deb.
Thank you.
So thanks so much for being here, we appreciate it. This is the first time in eight years or something of doing this, that we've ever done this with a phone, so I'm glad it was able to be worked out. So typically, we, we generally start by asking candidates to just kind of tell us a little bit about themselves and why they're running for office.
Okay. I have lived in Oshkosh, it's been just about 15 years. I'm originally from northern Wisconsin, and I have been a business owner for the last 10 years. I've had Fine Country Gourmet, started out of my home, and as we grew the business, moved to North Main Street. And so we've been on, at that location for three years, served on various boards and committees, very involved within the city. I think Oshkosh has a lot going for it. And I'm running for council because any decision that goes on within the city, I'm impacted both on a personal, individual, family, as well as a business.
Sure, sure. Now, you said you've served on different committees and boards and so forth, like what have you served on?
I've been on the Oshkosh Christian School Board of Directors. Also, I'm on the Oshkosh Economic Development Board, I'm on the Redevelopment Authority Board, and then serve on some of the committees within the bid district for Oshkosh.
Okay. Anything, anything, not, you know, take, forget about bid for a minute, anything as far as the actual city boards and commissions that you've served on, plan commission, zoning board, any of those?
I have not had the opportunity to serve on those. Again, the Redevelopment Authority Board, which deals primarily with the River Rock area.
That's a biggie. What have you learned from your service on that board? Because that, you know, that, you're, you're spending money that the city council doesn't even have to approve, if, if memory serves me correctly. So what have you learned about your service on that particular board as far as how the city works and, and where we're going with economic development?
Well, one, one of the great things, and I was excited, was that a good part of what we do with that board currently is servicing what the vision was with Oshkosh when the community took the survey. And that's been very exciting. My experience on there so far is that we're trying to, to make what's a vision a reality. And there's been phenomenal cooperation and communication between city planning and the board to let us know what's going on. We've been very, very fortunate that with what we're doing there, we have had grant money from the DNR, as well as funds for the projects. And, and that's real exciting, because it's not that we're borrowing the money in order to complete a project that the community wants.
Sure, okay. Dan, do you want to jump in?
Sure. What personal traits do you have that you think would make you a good council member?
Well, I think I'm, I feel that one of the things that's important, and, and I, and I do this with the businesses that I've had, is strategic planning. I try to minimize the knee-jerk reactions to decision-making, thoughtful planning, and making sure that with anything that you do, sometimes there's bumps in the road, you need to have a willingness to work, a cooperation, communication, a willingness to compromise if need be, and to also have a good understanding, with anything, budget is a huge issue. Especially right now. And with that, we have to make sure that we're making very, very, very good decisions. And when we make those decisions, we need to not only make them, but we need to be able to execute them.
Sure. Has any group or organization urged you to run?
I would say, I don't know specifically that it's a particular group. I have just had different members with different various committees and the boards that I've served on that have encouraged me to run. I can't specify, I, I wouldn't say that they're any part of any particular group.
Okay. Can I ask one more, Cheryl?
Sure, go right ahead.
All right, this is a, this is a fun one. If elected, a, a proposed amendment to the pet ordinance to allow four hand chickens per household will be on the agenda soon. On a scale of 1 to 10, with 10 being the highest priority, how high would you score it for Oshkosh?
Specifically, this particular issue?
Yeah. What do you think of amending the pet ordinance to allow four hand chickens per household in the city of Oshkosh?
Well, I would have to say, that particular topic, I would not pretend to be an expert on.
You don't have to be. Do you want four-hand chickens in households in, in Oshkosh, or don't you?
I guess I would need to know a little bit more about it before you can make a, a good, good decision. You have to have the facts first.
Chickens don't vote.
That, you are absolutely correct. You are correct.
Well, you know, let me just try and explain it here in, in real brief, you know, in short terms. This is a sustainability issue, that's where it's kind of coming from, is our City Sustainability Board, or whatever their actual name is now. It's being patterned after other, a few other communities throughout the state, so that people can be more sustainable and have chickens that basically lay their own eggs. It's more wholesome, they believe, and, and that kind of thing. There will be requirements as to how close to a structure the, the chicken coops have to be. There will be safety things put into the ordinance that, you know, will protect the chickens and keep them warm and safe and, and that kind of thing. On the other hand, people are saying, you know, they're noisy, they stink, there's this, there's that. And this is an issue that's going to come up. I don't know if it'll come up before the new council is seated or after, but it's, it's a pretty big issue. So you haven't heard about this at all?
I wouldn't say, no, not necessarily. I, I do believe that somebody had approached, one of the, the people who had helped get signatures and had asked what the stance was, and was very honest, and he said, I have, I have no clue. I don't know that I've heard of it, other than that particular instance. But I would assume, I mean, we've got good people within the city, I'm assuming, I would like to assume, that they're doing adequate research, good information, that they'll be able to bring to help make a good qualified decision if this is something that should be.
What about dogs in parks? That's been a hotly contested issue for a lot of years, pretty much has, I would say almost half and half divided the city. They've tested it in a, in, one or two parks, Dan, do you know? One park for sure.
Yeah, it's out on the south side, I think, but I don't know what, what the name of it is.
You know, do you feel that with certain provisions, you know, length of leash and, you know, cleaning up after your pet and that kind of thing, that dogs should be allowed in our city parks?
If it's, when it comes to public safety, is, they're currently doing that right now. As long as, if it's something that's currently going on, it's manageable, it's controllable, and it's not negatively impacting public safety, you know, I guess, at this time, I guess I would be fine.
Okay. Okay. Dan, do you want to go, or?
One more.
Sure, go ahead.
Commercial development seems stuck again. Every time we have candidates running for the council, we talk about Marion Road development. And every two years, we're talking about it again. And every two years, we're talking about it again. It hasn't gone very far, and if you look at the alternative in other areas of the city, residential development on Ninth Avenue, the Longfellow property over on East Parkway, isn't it time to consider residential development for the Marion Road area?
Well, I guess, what type of, of residential are, are you considering? Are you considering individual homes? Are you considering condos, twin dominiums? What do you, what would be your idea?
All of the above, just to get something on that property. We've waited a long time, and commercial development just isn't going anywhere.
Well, I guess my comment to that would be, when it comes to issues, and that is definitely one of the more passionate issues that I have, is basic economic development within the city. We've had a number of big companies that have left, we have a number of people that have been left unemployed with that, and we need to make sure that we're bringing business back in. With that being said, there also has to be a culture and environment here within the city in which there's adequate cooperation between city, commerce, chamber of commerce, economic development. And there's a number of things within that that needs to work a little bit more cooperatively together. If one piece of the puzzle is missing, it's certainly a repellent for any business that wants to come into Oshkosh. So I understand what you're saying is that, yes, it's been a long time, you know, every two years, something comes up, but I don't know that the environment here in Oshkosh has always been pro-business. I would like to see if we had an opportunity to try to do that, what that area would look like. Is that fair?
Sure, it's just that nothing's happening.
Right. However, sometimes it just takes the right mix to make a difference.
Yeah.
Well, there was a group, and I don't know if it's, it's the current group that's redeveloping along Marion Road, but there was a group that, that talked about putting some housing down there. Remember that, Dan?
Yes, and I think Chancellor Wells at UWO was, was one of the original proponents of that idea.
And, and, but like Dan said, there's nothing happening there. And the other argument that we hear all the time is that we need more quote-unquote "affordable" housing. You know, something that's not high-end, something that's, you know, for people who are low to mid-income.
Yeah, what do you think of the apartments on, on Ninth and Eighth Avenue South, off of, of South Main?
Or on Division, behind the Roxy.
From, from a viewpoint, they're absolutely beautiful.
Yeah.
They're absolutely, the, the gentleman who owns those properties does a phenomenal job of building those.
And the occupancy is full.
And the occupancy is full. From what I understand is that incredibly, not only a, a good visionary as far as building, but does everything very, very well, first-class all the way, done a fantastic job of making those areas, certainly, certainly an improvement over what they have been in the past.
Can I jump in here, Dan?
Absolutely.
On economic development? You know, one of the things that I think is frustrating for a lot of folks in town, Deb, is all these empty boxes that we're seeing. You know, a business goes out of business, they're allowed to keep their sign up, which I think is misleading for people driving down the street. You, you drive down the street, you see a sign, you think there's a business there, you get there, the, the building's either gone, or it's a vacant building. We have far too many empty boxes sitting around in Oshkosh.
Yes.
What, I mean, if you were elected to the council, what would you do, if anything, to, to get some of these boxes, either get their signs taken down so that it's not misleading people and looking, I mean, it just looks tacky. Forget about the fact that it's misleading people, it looks stupid, and it makes, it's a poor reflection on the city, it really is. You know, get the signs taken down and get these buildings re-leased. What do we do?
I, I think there's a number of things. It's a multiple-prong approach, and we have to get everybody on the same page. Again, we, we've had a number of businesses that have looked at the, the area, from what I understand, and then they get snagged. And it might be inspections, it might be financing, there's a number of things. And we are in a tough position with the banks having, you know, their, their lending has not been there. We're just in a tough spot right now. But you are correct, there, there are certain things that we do need to implement. It is a reflection on the city. We are as, perception is reality. And one of the things is that we're lagging behind our neighbors, the Fox Valley. And so we need to do something about that. I, I 100% agree. You are, you are right on the mark with that. How do we fill them? Again, we need to take a look at some things. You know, what type of incentives can we offer for businesses to fill those spots? You know, what are we doing with the property management firms that, that own them? Those are all things that we have to take a look at. We want, we want to be pro-Oshkosh. One of the things in order to do that is, these companies are also looking at, what is our average, the medium, median income here in Oshkosh? And the other thing is, is the community has to understand that we ourselves have to determine how we see ourselves. The first thing that we should be looking at within the community is, what can we do to support the businesses that are here, to keep the existing ones going and thriving? We still have a lot of those that still feel that they need to leave Oshkosh and spend their money in other communities when they could be right here.
You mentioned incentives. What kind of incentives would you like to see the business community be given to, to help fill some of those, these slots?
With all things being said, if there were, there were no, I mean, it would be great if we could offer some type of financial incentive. What I will say, though, is that it's taking a look at what we can do realistically. And so until you're really immersed in and can talk with, you know, our city planner, get more involved with, from a budget standpoint, you know, what can we do, what are we willing to do in order to have them here?
One more question from me, Dan?
Absolutely.
Kind of as a follow-up.
Oh, go for it.
And then I'm going to turn it over to you for a bit.
All right.
How do you feel our use of TIFs in the city of Oshkosh has been?
From what I understand and what I know and what we've done with that, I have been in support of, of, of a good number. It makes sense if, when it comes to that, if you have an employer in the city who has been dedicated, not only in remaining here and keeping people employed, but also funding a number of nonprofits in which, in an economy right now, you don't have a lot of donors and supporters. If there are things and incentives in order to keep them, absolutely, sometimes we need to take a look at that.
Okay, but here's the problem. Are you talking about Oshkosh Corp. right now, in particular?
Perhaps.
There are TIFs that have been offered to people who have never done anything in this city. They're just looking at coming here, sometimes with pie-in-the-sky ideas. And sooner or later, we're going to reach our, our maximum, and we're going to be TIF-ed out. And then what? What do we do then to attract more business? And, you know, why can't we start patterning ourselves after townships like the town of Grand Chute, where they can't even use TIFs because it goes against state law? Except in, I think, a blight situation or something like that. I mean, they've got a beautiful facility there with the Fox River Mall. Now, maybe they're having some current financial problems right now, I don't know, but that has been a highly successful mall for a lot of years. And they did it without TIF money. Why do we always have to use TIF?
I, I wish that wasn't the case.
It doesn't have to be, though.
Perhaps.
I mean, others do it, others find ways. And, and if we want to sustain ourselves, shouldn't we have, I mean, a carpenter doesn't go out to build a house with just a hammer.
No.
He has a lot of tools, right?
Right.
So shouldn't we, if we want to be prudent, have more tools in our toolbox than just TIF, because sooner or later, we can't use TIF anymore?
Oh, I agree with you, we need to be more creative. That's why we, that is why we have good people in place within the city, is we should be thinking outside of the box. And I'm not just saying, give anybody TIF just because they want it. That makes absolutely no sense at all. If they've got a good P&L statement, a good balance sheet, it makes sense, and there's caveats to it. caveats to it. For instance, if they don't properly use it, if they don't stay within the community, if there are not those things, then yes, then they should be required to pay it back.
And they should have to meet the but-for test? Would you agree with that? But for the use of TIF, this development would not occur?
Perhaps.
Well, that's what the law says. So, okay. Dan, take it away.
Yeah. The city did very little, I think, to support keeping our postal operations in Ashkosh. Do you think the council and the city could have done more? And were any of the organizations that you're part of, do anything?
The organizations that I've been a part of, no. Didn't, didn't have anything to do with that. When it, when it comes to the postal service, absolutely, I do not want to lose any service there at all, nor, nor do I think anybody here in Ashkosh at all.
But we didn't do very much. The only ones who raised hell were the postal workers and Congressman Petry. Don't you think the council should have done more?
I don't know specifically what exactly they did. Again, perception is reality. Perhaps they felt that they did quite a bit. Perhaps you feel that they didn't do enough.
All they did is file the Freedom of Information Act on the correspondence, something that Congressman Petry had already done.
Did they do anything on an individual level?
I have no idea.
Well, and then that's the hard part. We don't have all the facts before we can make that decision.
I think Jess King might have been out there from a state representative standpoint. I know Gordon Hints was very involved. And I might be overlooking somebody else on the council, but I, I don't know that, certainly as a council, they didn't do anything collectively. And I think there is strength in numbers. Is that kind of where you're going with this, Dan?
Yeah.
That...
Maybe even a step further. Maybe it's a weakness in the city management form of government.
What was that?
Maybe it's a weakness in our form of government.
So do you think the form of government is working, or does it need to be changed?
Are you talking about the structure?
Yeah.
Of City Council?
Council, you know...
City manager versus a full-time elected mayor?
An Aldermanic district?
Yeah.
Yep.
Again, we, we need to conduct ourselves in a cooperative manner. The city council, what I would like to see, and I would hope that if I would be privileged to be elected, and those that in addition are elected, as well as the ones, that we'll be able to come together. There needs to be better synergy between, among the council members, the mayor and the city planner. Absolutely. If, if it continues to be where there is most certainly an issue where it appears that everybody is on opposite ends of the spectrum, no, we're not going to move very far, very fast.
So do you, do you think, though, that we have a problem in Ashkosh? One of the reasons we're not moving forward perhaps is because of the form of government that we have. You know, Nina seems to be surpassing us a lot, Appleton's surpassing us a lot, and all these communities, and I'm talking in terms of economic development and things like that. And these communities, they do have a different form of government. They have a full-time elected mayor, Aldermanic districts. Do you think that maybe that's, you know, a stumbling block or a hurdle for us? Or is it that we just haven't been electing the right people, maybe?
It could be. I mean, that's a tricky question.
It could be which?
That, that is, that is a tricky question. I would say, ideally, if you could have a mayor, and that was the only thing that they did, yes, absolutely, and the city budget would allow for us to be able to do that, absolutely. Again, it goes back to budget.
We're just having some static from the phone line. Just ignore it. Okay, Dan, you know, we're down to about five minutes or maybe a little less, four minutes, I'm told. So you want to just jump in here quick?
I have one more.
Go ahead.
Would you support privatizing any city services in the future with possible big budget cuts coming in the next biennium?
And an example would be?
I don't know. I want you to give me one. Let's, let's say they cut shared revenue by 25%, and they may do that.
And anything is a possibility right now. The hard part is, is when you take a look at the Ashkosh budget, there, there isn't a surplus. I mean, we have a balanced budget. We have $16 million in debt, and, you know, the revenue stream coming in is what it is. Very likely, will, there will be a shortage. And when you talk about privatizing, I, again, that's hard to say at this point. We, we have no idea right now what type of monies and what type of budget crunch we're going to have to deal with and how we're going to do that. And so to just give a bland statement without being able to see exactly what we're going to have to tackle would not be prudent at all.
Yeah. I'm just asking, would you consider prioritizing and privatizing any city services? I mean, obviously, you wouldn't do that with police, but you might do it with some other lesser department.
Boy, you know, it's, it's tough. If, when you talk, and I, and I am an entrepreneur and a business owner. And obviously, you know, I am all about, you know, capitalism, entrepreneurship, privatizing, maybe a way to go. With that being said, though, when you're talking about possibly something like an ambulance service or something like that, I don't know. You know, what is the company? The argument is, is privatizing certainly makes things more competitive, but is it the best possible service? When it comes to our fire department and our police department, the one thing I will say is that when I was out, you hear a lot about different concerns about the city. Those were two areas that never came up, one, anytime, in getting signatures. And those are two, when you're talking about public safety and public service like that, we, again, there may be, there may be things that we have to take a look at. But with the, but the priority, though, is how can we best service our community in the event of an emergency, in that type of instance?
All right. Dan, I'll just take this last question, then, and then we'll wrap it up.
Please do.
Because we are running out of time. Just real quickly.
Sure.
What have you heard on the campaign trail so far from people? What are their concerns? And what would they want you to do?
A lot of it is, is have Ashkosh an environment in which business wants to come. People want to be employed. People want to work. They're worried about how our, our nonprofits don't have the funding that they used to have because there's not the disposable income within the, within their own homesteads. And then with businesses, and businesses having cut back a lot of it is that.
Okay. All right. We're out of time. I'm going to just ask you to look into camera three there, Deb, and in about 30 seconds, tell folks why they should vote for you.
Well, being a part of Ashkosh, I would, again, like to have that vision, that Ashkosh really truly is a phenomenal community. We need to view ourselves as that, and we need to have the community come together. We do need to go to grow, and the best way to do that is economic development. And certainly, there is no issue that certainly is off the table, willing to look at all sides. There's not one particular side. And the best thing would be is that, you know, to make sure before we make decisions that we have all the facts, and then when we do make a decision, execute it quickly.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. Just sit tight. That's going to do it for us for this time. Remember, the general election is Tuesday, April 5th. If you're going to the polls, please vote for the candidates of your choice that day. If you're going to be voting absentee, you can do that anytime. I don't know when the cutoff is, but you can certainly do it by finding out more by contacting the city clerk, Pam Eubrig. And if you aren't registered to vote, please get registered. This is an important election, lots of things on the ballot, and you can find that out from Pam as well. So that's going to do it for us. Thanks to our guests this hour, Tom Peck Jr. and Deb Allison Osby, both candidates for the Ashkosh Common Council. We'll see you next time. Until then, take good care. Keep your eye on us. We've got our eye on Ashkosh.